Madam Clerk, are we ready to go?
We're ready.
Greetings, Tom.
It was a good meeting there.
Okay, welcome to the April 20th, 2010, Meeting of the Sammamish City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Don Jurey.
Present.
Here.
Here.
President.
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 Here.
Here.
She's here, she's in the next room. Okay, we have some special guests here from, um, let's see, which... Okay, we have a couple of officers there that are going to come and lead us in the pledge, right? Okay, everybody, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we have a whole group of students from McCalliff Elementary School and student leaders, right? So, I think we don't have any student liaison here from Eastlake or Skyline. Why don't we have a couple of the student council people come up to the podium and say a few things? Tell us about what you've been doing today, for one thing.
Hello, City Council. I'm Amy Weisgarver, the president of the Student Council at McCalliff Elementary. We have 24 classroom representatives, and the representatives are from our 4th, 5th, and 6th grade classes. And we have two ASB advisors, Mrs. Beth Weaver and Mrs. Lynn Swanson. This year, our Student Council has worked hard to make this school more enjoyable and helpful to the community. One of the things we have done is popcorn sales each month to give money to charities, and some of the money to buy things our school needs. Some of the charities we have given money to include Hope Link, Meals on Wheels, Pennies for Patients for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and Adopt a Soldier. McCalliff Elementary is a green school. Last year, we brought recycling compost bins to the lunchroom. And for Earth Day, we will purchase and plant a tree using some of our popcorn money. We also plan school spirit days like May Madness and Twin Triplett Day. In December, we had a hot chocolate sales to raise money for Meals on Wheels, which was especially nice to give money for a warm meal on a cold day. In February, we had Random Acts of Kindness Week and encouraged students to do nice things for others at school and at home. In May, we will help the PTSA with the Entertainment at International Night. At McCalliff, students have a say in how things are done at school through the ASB suggestion mailbox near our library. Finally, we have two ASB representatives that have suggestions they would like to present to the City Council. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Amy.
Hello, I'm Grace Catherine Mitchell, a 4th grader at McCalliff. Um, well, well, first, thank you for the field trip. Today was really wonderful. Second, I had a suggestion. Well, I could tell that people in Washington and all around the world are always looking in the future, predicting. But why can't we in Sammamish have like a little museum or a place for like, to like, think about the immigrants and some stuff from the families that can bring in? Like, I found out I'm a quarter Lebanese, and that got me excited. And I think it would really make the town have some happiness if, like, they all brought cultures together. Be cool, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. That's a very good suggestion, because this city is getting more and more multicultural, and we're recognizing that. And in particular, I'm sure when the census is revealed, we'll see how multicultural we are. So, thank you very much, Grace.
Um, I heard that there might be a teen center. So, I was thinking for like toddlers and some like kids, like, under 6th grade, maybe, could have like a little playground near the teen center. So, like, so there would be something for the kids and the teens.
That's a good idea. Thank you very much, all of you. And I enjoyed meeting with you this afternoon. You had good questions. And I'm sure you had a good lunch down in the Commons. Great. Now, I think I skipped the approval of the agenda. If there is no objection, and seeing no objection, the agenda...
You've gotta give us a chance.
The agenda is approved. Again, there's no student liaison report, so we are at Presentations and Proclamations. And the second one is a Regional Coalition of Housing, RCH.
We have our Executive Director, Arthur Salwen, here from RCH. He's going to make the presentation. Arthur?
Welcome, Arthur.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. I don't know if this chair is for me to use, so I'll move to the side. Okay, thank you.
Great, though.
Thank you, Council and Mayor and Council. I'm here, as some of you are aware from past practice, I'm the Director of a Regional Coalition for Housing. And we have several items on your agenda over the, tonight, and one that will be coming up in a couple of weeks. So, I was here tonight to just give you some background and context for that. There are a number of new council members here, I see. So, I just wanted to have a couple items. And I think the request was that I sort of give a little background on each one, stop and see if you have questions about any of those before you, in preparation for you taking action. As background, RCH came out of a recommendation of a Citizens Advisory Group. And is a voluntary inter-local agency started in 1993 by three cities in East King County and the county. It now includes all 15 cities located in East King County. RCH was formed to assist cities and the county in their efforts to address housing needs and particularly affordable housing needs within East King County. It provides specialized staffing resource as well as a means for cities to combine their resources together, which you'll see through the work on the Trust Fund in the upcoming meeting. Part of the philosophy behind RCH is that housing needs are not defined by city boundaries, but more by market areas. It does not supplant the efforts of cities, but rather is meant to support the cities' efforts. And one goal is that by sharing their resources, cities can be more effective and more efficient in their efforts to address local housing needs. As such, RCH assists its members in several basic areas. First, we assist members with developing plans, policies, and regulations related to housing and affordable housing. For example, the Town Center Plan. Second, we provide, we assist cities that provide resources directly to affordable housing and assist with that process, such as through the Trust Fund, fee waivers, and land donations. We help with community education and conversations about housing needs in our communities. You will have handed out to you tonight a Housing 101 book. This is something that we started. Hopefully, yours will look like mine in about a year, which is all nice and dog-eared and things like that. That, this is meant to be a resource for you and background information that gives you information on the Growth Management Act and how it relates to housing. What are housing needs in East King County and your city? Summary of what cities have been doing over the last 15 years. Projects that have been funded, regulatory efforts. Who creates the affordable housing we're funding and how it has been financed. Some of, we also do workshops, and some of your commission members and staff attended that, our most recent one, a couple of weeks ago. We also assist members with administering local programs, such as the Trust Fund and regulatory programs. We also assist cities who have taken a more proactive role in the area of affordable housing by making land in their communities available, such as in Issaquah Highlands, where several sites have been made available for affordable housing, such as the YWCA and Habitat for Humanity, and also the old Surplus Coast Guard property on Avondale Road in Redmond, which now has market rate ownership housing, homeless housing, and housing by Habitat for Humanity. As was stated earlier, RCH is an organization that assists its members. And as such, its organization structure is designed to reflect that. The Executive Board of RCH consists of chief executives of the member jurisdictions. The City Manager, Ben Yazizi, and/or his deputy are members. The annual work program and budget, which is on your agenda tonight, is developed with input from the Executive Board and staffs, but comes back to you, the councils, for ratification and review and ratification. And then finally, RCH does not take any direct action. RCH is here as a, we support the efforts of cities. We're there to support you and your efforts. Leadership in this area comes from the councils. We're here to support those efforts of you and your commissions. So, as part of our organizational structure, every year, we come back to you with the work program and the budget. As I said, it was developed with input from the Executive Board and staffs, and then is brought back to each council for action. That is on your agenda tonight. It follows the same format as in previous years. For the budget, the assessments to run the organization are the same, are flat and the same level as they were in 2009 out of direction from the Executive Board. For the work program, activities are organized into the four or five areas that I just described previously. And for 2010, some highlights that are listed in that work program include administering the Housing Trust Fund. You have provided great support in the past towards that, as have all the other member cities of RCH. Second is your Town Center Plan. We've been working for several years with your commission, and we look forward to working with the council as they review the work of the commission. We will be assisting with the housing needs assessment for all the members of RCH as part of the updates to your comprehensive plans as under the Growth Management Act. We will be helping with other items in your housing strategy plan, some of which have been identified as innovative forms of housing or looking at encouraging accessory dwelling units in your community. We're also available to provide information to the public. People who are looking for affordable housing, people who are facing challenges with their homes and may have issues with foreclosure, we have information for them on our website. And also information, for example, on first steps for homeowners who are considering forms of housing, such as accessory dwelling units or mother-in-law apartments. And then finally, one of our roles is to represent cities' perspective at the regional scale and regional conversations related to housing, such as in the area of homelessness, other funders who are providing funding to projects. And also, there's some new effort by the federal government called a Sustainability Department, and we are representing cities' interests in pulling together a regional application in that process. So, that's sort of a background on us and the annual work program and budget. And if you have any questions about the group or the work program, happy to answer those.
Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Arthur, thank you. And I just want the council's attention, and I also recognize that Arthur is the Director of this organization. There's absolutely zero percent increase from 2009 to 2010 budget. I mean, as a board, obviously, we would like to see that. But I think that Arthur and his staff deserves lots of credit for that, making that happen. So, I want to thank you, Arthur, for doing a great job of monitoring the budget and keeping the cost down.
Questions? Michelle?
Hi, Arthur.
Microphone.
You're not staying around till we vote on your agenda bill tonight?
I wasn't, if you name it, I would, but I have Redmond Council to go to as well.
Okay. In looking through the package, I was interested in what you were working on for the different cities?
Yes.
And in Redmond, you talk about implementing a Cities Innovative Housing Ordinance and Pilot Program?
Right.
Can you tell me about that?
This is something they've actually had on the books for several years. Kirkland did something about four or five years ago. Redmond has sort of stepped to the plate. And what they do is they allow, I don't know if it's two or three developments a year, can make proposals through a special process, where they can propose developments within single-family areas that allow, I think, up to twice the number of housing units. I'm not sure, quite that high?
Is that the cottage housing thing?
No.
No.
That's separate from the cottage housing. They also have a cottage housing ordinance. This is a special program where in any single-family neighborhood, you go through a special process, have to meet with the neighborhood and see if you can get agreement on allowing like duplexes or clustered housing or things along those lines.
Oh.
I can get you more information if you're interested.
Yeah, I would be interested. I don't, would the rest of the council be interested in redoing that?
That'd be good.
Yes. Maybe we want to include it in our work plan.
Great.
Other questions for Arthur?
We're not increasing your budget, by the way, so we work.
We're used to that.
Why should you be any different than me here?
We're, we're used to it by now, so.
I have one question.
Nancy?
We're going to be doing our Town Center, and we may not keep the 10 and 10% requirements for that. We may, I don't know. But we're going to be, hopefully, including a significant number of affordable units in our Town Center.
Right.
And it will probably not be just incentive, but it will, may require contributions from the city that are possible under the law. It may not, but... We are currently giving RCH significant sums of money that are going outside the city. When we get into our Town Center program and actually get to a point where it's going to become a reality, is, will, I assume RCH will also be looking to help us with our projects?
Yes, I mean, the way it has worked historically, the idea behind the Trust Fund is that by cities combining their resources, we can move the resources to the best projects in the region. 10 years ago, I was having the same comment raised about Issaquah related to Issaquah Highlands. We've probably funded about $3 or $4 million in the last four or five years in the master plan communities in Issaquah Highlands, because there were finally developments in their community. Our goal long-term is to get a balance of affordable housing throughout all of the communities in East King County. And many of the projects, when you look at the list, you can see are million-dollar, need up to million dollars or more. By us combining our resources, when the right project comes here, yes, most definitely, we would be looking to support a project in this area. We'll also, just for the rest of the council's certification, is as you develop and approve whatever regulations you come up with, we'll be at those meetings helping you understand the policies that you're developing. We've worked with about seven other cities on similar policies. But what we'll also do is, once you adopt whatever regulations you do, we'll be the staff who will help your staff develop the administrative documents, and we'll be the ones that can work with all the individual developers to develop the contracts for their projects. In other words, we'll be here to administer the programs you create through your land use regulations as well.
Just to add a couple of things. And the Executive Board constantly checks the parity issue, Nancy, that in terms of what jurisdictions are putting and what jurisdictions are getting. Not only that we focus on distributing these affordable housings within the jurisdictional boundaries of the RCH, but we're also looking at how are these projects are being distributed. In terms of the dollar contribution, Bellevue continues to be the heavy lifter. They're, they're contributing about $1 million till about last year, a million plus on the capital side. And, and I, I want to thank personally also the Bellevue's leadership in this particular effort. I really don't think that we could have done without them being out there.
And the information that City Manager Yazizi was just referencing in the appendix of the work book we just handed out does show you where the funds have come from, from all the cities over the last 10 years, as well as earlier in the book, a listing of all the projects that have been funded. So, you can get a feel for the range of housing that has been supported and that's been throughout the entire East King County area. So, there's lots of information on that. And if you have any follow-up questions, more than happy at another time to go into that and more with you.
Mark has a question for you.
It's more of an appreciation. One of the things about, when I talk about affordable housing in our Town Center with people is, the question is, you know, how can these units stay affordable over time? And I think, Arthur, really, that's one of the, the key components of affordable housing is strategies and language and underlying documents that, that keep affordable housing affordable for the long term, consistent with keeping it maintained and part of the community. So, I'm looking forward to that being a big contribution that you make to our Town Center.
We will work on all those legal documents for review by your attorneys, but we've been doing it for 15 years in a lot of other cities, and we'll bring a lot of the lessons learned there to your community.
That's great. I appreciate that.
Speaking of documents, we have the Revised Interlocal. And I believe there's 16 parties in, in RCH?
Yes.
15 cities in King County?
Yes.
It says Revised Interlocal. How often do we address a Revised Interlocal? And is it revised significantly or just changing the date?
This is the third amendment in 17 years to the Interlocal, the first in probably eight or nine. And this is a significant change to the Interlocal. It's not just a date change. And if I could take a few minutes, I'd like to give you some context for that.
Have some of the other cities already approved it?
Your number 13 or 14.
Uh-huh.
So, we have gone to about 12 or 13 councils at this point. Redmond's right after you in about an hour, and...
Okay, a couple of points.
Okay. So, the objectives, the main objectives that we're trying to accomplish with the, with the Revised Interlocal Agreement is, one, first and foremost, not to change the governance structure. That's something we heard. A year ago, we came to you with a preliminary idea that would have changed the legal structure of RCH. And what we heard, and it was good news, I think, from the councils, is we like how you work. And so, we're not proposing any changes to the role of councils, our relationship with cities. But what we are proposing, but what the issue that was driven is, as you will see, when you see the projects from the fall around, some of the projects have up to 10 cities funding it. As of this time, that means 10 contracts that I'm working on, and also 10 financial systems that I have to account and synchronize with. What we're trying to accomplish is, as you do now, you decide how much money you want to spend on housing. As you do now, you then decide which projects you want to fund. But what we want to change is, once you say yes to a project, we do one contract. The way we are proposing to make that happen is Bellevue, Bellevue has been the administrating agent for RCH from day one on the administrative budget. What they look like they're willing to do, and their council voted on it three weeks ago, is to expand the role of the administrative agent to also administer the Trust Fund. So, what that basically means is creating a place where you can deposit your funds. But we set up a number of steps, and which I'll go into in a second. The third issue that's come up, and so that's the main objective, the third issue that's come up, and it's sort of been on the horizon for about the last six or seven years, is the RCH sphere of influence has never been changed. The way it was first set up is we showed a market area, and only three cities joined originally. But RCH was set up to allow cities to join as they saw the need and as their community grew. So, when you incorporated, I think a couple of years later, you joined RCH. We now have all 15 cities. A question that's been posed is, are the Snoqualmie Valley cities facing a lot of the same issues that the cities within the rest of East King County are facing? Could they benefit from the same access to resources and staffing that you experienced by being allowed to join RCH? So, the RCH map of sphere of influence is being proposed to change to include those cities. What that means is those cities aren't necessarily going to join today, just like when we first formed, we only had three of the 14 cities. What it does mean, though, is that with approval of the Executive Board and the other city, and the City Council who wants to join, then they can potentially join RCH. What you get to approve down the road is, the next budget, when they join, they'll have to pay their share towards the RCH administrative costs. This is something that the Executive Board looked at. We've talked to the cities in the valley. Some are probably interested sooner than others. But the idea being to create that as an opportunity for them. Those are the three main changes. The document you see has a lot of redlining in it. I think there's two versions that you get to see. We had a legal team that included attorneys from Bellevue. Issaquah are actually Ogden Murphy, who represents three or four cities, Newcastle, the county, and Hugh Spitzer, who's with Foster Pepper. All were part of a legal team to update this. The main things that are changed in there is, one, a more formalized process for appointing an administrating agent, because they're taking on a bigger role, but also a way to remove them if they're not doing their job. Establishes a centralized Trust Fund account, but that has very clear guidance that no monies can ever leave that account with, you'll have a subaccount for each city, and then accounts for each project you fund. No funds can ever leave that account without approval from a council. Okay, so you still control that money. You can pull it back into your city if you don't feel it's being used well. The other thing the account does is any interest that would accrue, because sometimes it takes a year or two for projects to get done, that interest would accrue to your, you would get credit for any interest that is earned. The other part is that that sets up a process that authorizes the administrating agent to sign contracts in behalf of the member jurisdictions after councils approve projects. There's also the governance issues, as I mentioned, the RCH sphere of influence. And then another thing, because there are some more administrative items in here, is in the past, the Interlocal has required 100% approval from all members to make any changes. Right now, for all things that relate to governance, it still takes 100% approval. Councils will still control RCH. RCH has always been that way. We always intend to stay that way. However, for more administrative items, if they didn't relate to governance, they could be amended with 2/3 of the councils approving. That's just something that's been done in the other Interlocals recently. But we took a more conservative approach on what things can be done with only 2/3's vote. And then finally, because it's a 17-year-old document, the attorneys had a number of standard conditions that have been in more recent Interlocals that they wanted added to the document. So, there are quite a bit of changes, but that's the flavor. And there is a memo that describes that in a little more detail, along with the Interlocal, sort of laying that out in a little bit more detail.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Nope? Thanks. Oh, Ben?
Another question, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I know Arthur has to run to Redmond. Item number nine and 10, he gave a perfect staff report. I was wondering that if he could perhaps take those items earlier, get it done, so we can send Arthur to Redmond City Council.
I think he was going to go anyway. He, he's answered my questions on it. You mean, change the order?
Change, yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, sure.
I think that's fine.
Okay, well, then, let's, let's go to, do you have a few more minutes, Arthur?
Sure, oh, yes.
Okay, then, item number nine is the resolution to approve the RCH 2010 Budget and Work Plan. I think we've heard the staff report. Is, is there a motion to approve?
I'll second.
And second, it's been moved and seconded? Council discussion. Nancy?
It's a great program, and I support it.
We get a lot of value out of the, our relationship with RCH. And I, I support us spending the money and approving the agreement.
I think on, on page seven, where you address the, the work effort for Sammamish, you do mention in there accessory dwelling units and also cottage housing.
Right.
And those are some issues which we will be addressing, hopefully, this year. So, we'll look towards help from you. Any other discussion?
I just had a question, and maybe I missed it. How are the cities proportionally charged for membership in your program?
It is not explicitly laid out in the Interlocal. That's up for the Executive Board. But historically, it's essentially population.
That's what I always guess.
Per capita basis.
Okay.
Okay, no other discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor of approving the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By your vote of 7-0, Resolution Number... R2010-412 is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Okay, and next is item number 10, which is the Interlocal. And we, I think we've heard the staff report. Do we have a motion to approve the new Interlocal Government Agreement for RCH?
I'll move approval.
It's been moved and seconded? Discussion on the new Interlocal Agreement. I think my questions were answered. Anybody else?
No questions.
Nope, no questions?
No questions. We've worked on this thing two-plus years, right, Arthur?
At least.
Okay, all those in favor of the newer local, Interlocal Agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By your vote of 7-0, the Interlocal Agreement is approved. Thank you very much, Arthur.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Okay, now let's go back to our agenda, and we're under presentations and proclamations. Next comes a proclamation for native plant month, and do, Rena, are you going to be part of my discussion on that?
I guess I am. I was hoping to have Jessie here, but I don't see her, so I'll go ahead. I'm Rena Brady, and I'm here representing...
Here's Jessie coming.
Yes, she does. Do you want me to do it? Okay. I'm here because the, I'm a member of the Parks Commission, and the Parks Commission is recommending that the city adopt April 25th through May 1st as Washington State, or Washington Native Plant Appreciation Week. There was a proclamation passed by the governor a few months ago, and I apologize because we're tardy this year, we didn't do it at all last year, and two years ago, we did it somewhat in advance, but if there is a chance for us to have some pre-planning to this, which I promise we'll do next year, it is a great opportunity for the city to highlight some of the things that it's already doing, and such as the Wildlife Backyard Habitat Program, and the salvaging plants, and native plant restoration, like we're doing here at the Town Center site. So, I don't have a copy of the proclamation, oh, good.
Would you like to read it?
Certainly.
We can take turns.
Okay.
You start with the first paragraph.
All right. Whereas native plant species are an important part of Washington's heritage, providing important aesthetic, economic, and ecological contributions that make Washington a special place to live, and...
Whereas Washington enjoys an amazing diversity of over 3,000 native plant species, from rainforest plants on the Olympic Peninsula to the desert species of eastern Washington, and...
Whereas preserving native plant ecosystems is critical for the protection of birds, fish, and other wildlife, as well as water quality, and...
Whereas over 360 of our native plant species are listed as rare by the state's Natural Heritage Program, and...
Whereas native, whereas invasive species present a threat to sustaining the native plant ecosystems and the biodiversity that they enable.
Now, therefore, fortunately, we came out the right order, I, Don Jaren, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 25th to May 1st, 2010, as Native Plant Appreciation Week, and I urge all citizens to join with the city council in appreciating, enjoying, and celebrating our botanic diversity by taking advantage of the opportunities of this week to learn more about our native plants, their habitats, and how to protect them. Take a native plant walk, visit a natural area, or become involved in a restoration project as we join together to celebrate this precious heritage. And I would like to say that Rena Brady has been a spark plug in not only promoting the native plant appreciation, but also in capturing open space for the city. We have 57 acres, which we call the Beaver Lake Preserve, which through Rena's efforts and through the creative genius of others, not including us, the council, we were able to capture those 57 acres for the city of Samamish at no cost to the citizens of the city. We have put in walks in there, and that's a great place to wander around and appreciate the native plants. So Rena, thank you very much for your effort, and let's all enjoy this Native Plant Week. Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to make another comment. I was hoping that we could put some sort of a link on the city website to the Washington Native Plant Society site, which tells what different events are occurring around the area, and just encourage people to look up plants. I mean, I know that sometimes when we're driving along, especially at this time of year, and you see like the wild cherries and the dogwood, not many people know what the names of some of these things are, but I know from the meetings that we had in the neighborhoods, that people really do appreciate the natural setting here. It's one of the big draws for our city, so, thank you.
What do you think, council? Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Absolutely.
Nancy?
You know, we have one council member, anytime native species comes up, always questions whether native species really are native, and how important it is rather than the quote, "non-native." So I hope this council member is particularly involved with Native Species Week and sees the great value of native plants.
I wonder who she's talking about? Actually, I do appreciate the native plants. What I try to point out is that the invasive species, the non-native invasive species we should avoid, but there are non-native plants that do very well in the Northwest, and I don't want to exclude them from our beautiful habitat here. Thank you. Okay, next, thank you very much, young women and men of McCullough Elementary. Okay, next comes the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, we have approval of claims for the period ending April 20th in the amount of $1,088,548. We have resolution, resolution number 2040-408, declaring five vehicles as surplus. We have a resolution amending the purchasing policies that conform to state law, requirements for monies budgeted and spent in all city operations, that's resolution 2010-409. We have a resolution granting final plat approval to the plat of Pine Meadows, and that's resolution 2010-410. We have a resolution granting final plat approval to the plat of Chestnut Estates, resolution 2010-411. We have approval of the 2009 and 2010 carryforward request, and we have approval of the April 6th regular meeting minutes. And it occurred to me that if there is anybody in the public that wants to comment on any of these consent agenda items, we could entertain those comments right now. Are there any people that would like to comment on the consent items? No? Is the council ready to vote on the consent agenda?
I just had one question regarding the Chestnut Estates plat, final plat. I noticed that there was a lot of language in there about monitoring of Ebright Creek, and I just wanted to know who's doing that? Who minds a shop on that? Do we contract with somebody to do that, or...
Eventually, we will. Cameron Groll with Community Development, I'll ask John Cunningham to come up here and give you a little bit more of a detailed answer. Late this afternoon, we sent an email out in response to a citizen inquiry on that subject, and we copied the council, so you do have something in your email inbox on this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, John Cunningham, Public Works Director. Essentially, what's going on with the monitoring now, and as part of the requirements that the hearings examiner placed on the approval of this particular plat, the developer and the homeowners association are responsible for the monitoring right now under their NPDES, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, that they had to take out from Department of Ecology for the construction. Once the plat makes it through its maintenance and defect bonding period, a two-year period, and the city then takes over all of the stormwater facilities, the city then will be responsible for the monitoring based on the approved conditions from the hearings examiner. So during the two-year period, it's the developer, based on the requirements from the Department of Ecology. After that two-year period, it's the city, based on a monitoring plan, that will put it, put together between now and the time that occurs.
Have we seen any reports? Because they put all the infrastructure in, and it's sat there for a year or more.
Yeah, yes, we get those reports all the time, those go to our senior stormwater engineer who reviews those. They are well within meeting all of their requirements that the Department of Ecology has put on them for temperature and turbidity and the other things that they're required to monitor. So they're, they're well within those requirements.
Nancy?
If the system fails and the creek is damaged, and let's say it's within the two years and it's after the two years, who's going to be on the line for that?
If it's within the two-year maintenance and defect period, it will be the developer. During that period, they have a bond that they put in place that is specifically guaranteeing the performance of the system for the first two years. After the two years are up, the city takes it over, and then the city, the citizens, are responsible for it. In terms of Chestnut Lane, because there's substantially higher monitoring requirements on this plat than most other plats that we have in the city, the crossings at Pine Lake also has these same monitoring requirements, the homeowners association will be responsible for paying for all of the additional monitoring that's required to be done. So there'll be a separate account set up in our stormwater budget, and the homeowners association will be responsible for paying for all the monitoring that we deem necessary to meet the conditions of the hearings examiner's approval.
Okay, if that system fails, who's going to be paying for it? If that system were to fail, who's going to be on the hook for cleaning up the stream, for example?
The city.
Not the homeowners association?
Correct. It's our, it's our system, correct, yeah. No, and that's no different than any other, any other development. The only thing that's different is the monitoring that's required of the runoff that's leaving the site.
And that's because this is a super-sensitive site, right?
Correct, yeah, because it outfalls into Ebright Creek.
Yeah, the decision of the city to take over the stormwater facilities was something we made many years ago, and some cities actually do not do that. They require the homeowners associations or the property owner to be responsible forever for those systems.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
I think we felt that by having control, it's less likely to cause deleterious effects to our environment.
That's correct, and the citizens pay for it as part of their stormwater charge that they pay as part of their property tax bill, when they pay that, so...
When we revise our critical areas ordinance, would it be from a policy standpoint, perhaps, we're looking at open space programs and this TDR thing, looking at stepping back on the development from some of these more super-sensitive areas?
I certainly think that's a discussion that, that you'll want to be having as part of that, as part of the critical areas ordinance discussion.
Thank you, Rena.
Okay, we're in the consent agenda. Is there, is everybody all right with the consent agenda? Hearing no objection.
You've got to wait a minute, Thomas.
Hearing no objection to the, you have an objection?
No, I don't have an objection, I have a question, is that appropriate?
Okay, go ahead. We can pull something off the consent agenda if we want to take it separately, but if you have just a question for staff, go ahead.
It was item six on the consent agenda with the carryforward.
Oh, that's something else.
That's Lyman.
So, why don't we pull that off and go ahead and approve the consent?
Okay, let's pull item six off the consent agenda.
I'd like to talk about that, too. Yeah.
And, and we'll put that immediately after the consent agenda.
Thank you.
So with it off, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by your vote of 7-0, the consent agenda as amended is approved. Okay, item number six, the approval of the 29 to 2010 carryforward request. Lyman, you're, you're on the docket, so to speak.
Great, we will bring up our very brief PowerPoint.
You have a PowerPoint ready for us?
Absolutely.
Anticipation.
Very anticipatory. Great work.
You have before you essentially an administrative function. You already have a 2009, 2010 budget. This is basically just administrative in nature, where you, we're asking you to basically authorize carrying forward budget from last year for items that were not completed, that were already part of the work program. So this is, this is what we're doing. Of the $7.3 million carryforward total, $475,000 is for operating fund projects that were not completed as part of the work plan as approved, approximately $6.9 million for capital fund projects. Again, I'll point out that authorization is already included in the 2009, 2010 biennial budget. There is no new budget authority that's being requested. The purpose of this is purely an administrative action that is a management tool that allows us to segregate 2009 expenditures from 2010 expenditures. So basically, we're drawing a line in the sand, so we can report out on 2010 by itself, If you, if you'd like, I'll go through the general fund, the street fund, surface water management fund, and the items for carryforward for the capital funds. Hearing no objections. General fund is approximately $285,000. We are moving forward $135,000 in related stimulus grant-funded expenses from 2009 to 2010. We're also moving forward $85,000 related to the sales tax study, and increased state auditor charges for auditing the federal grant funds that we just talked about in the private, previous one. $48,000 for parking lot at the 30% design project stage, and sustainability contract moving forward to 2010.
Which parking lot?
This would be, I believe, the parking lot behind the library. Council authorized 30% completion design, and that's what we're, we're moving forward to, that budgeted expenditure.
And then 17,000?
And then 17,000 for other, other projects, miscellaneous projects, including the art commission, I think was $2,900, police patrol cameras, lighting assessment, et cetera. Street fund, $116,350 related to the King County contracted street repair work that was moved forward from 9 to 10. Surface water management fund, $73,700, which is part of the rate study and stormwater manual update. And then on the transportation capital, this is where you're going to see the bulk of it. We have, we're moving forward $2 million on the 244th Avenue and East Lake-Samamish Parkway project. We're moving forward the $1 million Snake Hill contingency, moving forward the $766,000 capital contingency reserve. We're also moving forward $375,000 for the sidewalk and pavement programs that were started in 2009 and not completed. $225,000 for intersection and neighborhood projects, again. $200,000 for the Town Center roadway analysis. Again, this is work started in 2009 but not yet completed. And then for roadway analysis, and then that 200,000 also includes Southeast 24th, street lighting, and other Southeast 20th projects.
So Lyman, the $2 million for 244th Avenue and East Lake-Samamish Parkway, is that simply because what we had budgeted in 2009 didn't get completed in 2009?
Correct.
That's not contingencies that...
No, it is, it is actual construction dollars that's getting moved forward because of the schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then capital facility improvements, approximately $1.5 million. Approximately $1 million of that is for the maintenance facility that was moved, the actual construction work moved forward from 9 to 10. And then Room 202, another improvement, $480,000.
What is that?
That's not Ben's office, is it?
No, 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 that was...
John, don't start that rumor now.
That was work that was started upstairs on the finance and parks area. We had money left over, or money that was not spent, that we're moving forward for the other side of the building, and also looking at other improvements, basically, to City Hall that are capital-related. Couple of things we're going to look at are improved lighting, as you'll notice, we don't have lighting down the center hall here, and you're all familiar with the story behind that. So we're moving forward some of that budget, but we'll bring, bring actual expenditures back to, back to council as we move forward.
Goal with that is the good bidding environment, so this may be a great opportunity for us to finish up the upstairs room, so then the council will have a flexibility to use that room for a variety of purposes.
Then we also have $327,000 for the surface water management capital fund. These are projects also that are primarily transportation-related, that are handled in the surface water, or surface water capital fund, that are moving forward from 9 to 10. Vehicle replacements, $195,000. These were vehicle replacements that were started and authorized in 2009, and, but they actually were not purchased until 2010, based on the availability of the vehicles. Parks Capital Fund, $190,000.
Before you go on on that one, at a later date, I'd appreciate hearing how our decision process works for repair versus replace with regard to city vehicles.
Absolutely.
That'd be a good, good item to discuss.
Yeah, very, it'd be a good topic to discuss. We can actually discuss that for full council, or we could bring it up at the Finance Committee.
You have one.
Okay, great. Let's see, Parks Capital Fund, approximately $190,500, being moved forward for projects that were basically in the design phase, but that were moving forward to 2010. And then information technology, approximately $121,000. Those include software upgrades and electrical services that were necessary for... Those include software upgrades and electrical services that were necessary for completing our nine-ten plan that are moving forward from nine to 10.
Good. Any other questions for Lyman? No, then, okay.
We're stuck on the draw tonight, aren't we? John Curley and I were in a meeting, and there was a footnote in the same list of numbers about the $4 million operational savings. I didn't see that.
Actually, we were going to bring that back to you. We have about $4 million in operational savings from nine to 10, but we'll be discussing that in further detail during the next budget process.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something. Thank you.
Okay, may I ask for a motion to authorize the city manager to make this administrative adjustment resulting in carry forward certain portions of the unexpended 2009 budgets in the amounts provided in the attached summary?
So moved.
I'd like to second that.
It's been moved and seconded in council discussion. Ready for the question?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By your vote of seven zero, the city manager is so authorized. Thank you, Lyman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Okay, now we're back on track. Public comment. Time for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have a sign-up sheet? No sign-up sheet. Would there be someone that would like to address the council at this time? No? Okay. Then public comment is closed. And next, we come to item number eight on the agenda. Amendments to the wireless communication facility, SMC 218.55. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our community development director and assistant city manager Cameron Gural is going to give the staff report.
For once, I don't have a PowerPoint prepared for you here tonight because we went through a very extensive one last night at the study session, and you've had a presentation on this item twice before, so...
Given that, do you want to postpone the action item to another time on this?
I'm not laughing over here, Ben.
Last night, there were a couple of comments made regarding...
Members, yes.
Some changes or...
And we do have some changes, but my suggestion is that since you have the public hearing that is still open, that you may want to consider reopening the public hearing, taking in additional testimony from the members of the public, closing the hearing. We have some aspects of that ordinance, based on last night's discussion, to highlight for you, and then if the council wants to make some changes, we can do that. Does that make sense?
Good. Public hearing is now reopened. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Are we adjourned or closing?
We're closing it because we're going to vote on it this evening.
Right. And just for the record, staff did today attempt to reach out to as many of the members of the wireless community, of the provider community that we work with as applicants to participate in tonight's hearing. I believe that the city clerk distributed to you hard copies of the public testimony that's been collected. We had something some weeks ago from Mr. Torone, and then there's been a couple of emails during the open period of the public hearing, mostly from Mr. Abrahams, on aspects of the material in front of you. I'd be happy to certainly respond to anything in any of those materials if you'd like a staff comment on the public hearing testimony. But we did make that attempt to bring people in. What we're told is that we are, like Redmond's dealing with Arch tonight, there are other cities dealing with things, and some of the typical representatives are off at other events tonight, so we have what we have.
Okay. Would you like to go through the proposed changes, or should we get a motion on the table first?
Maybe get a motion, and we'll get changes.
Okay, do we hear a motion to approve the ordinance amending SMC 21A55?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, and now we're in council discussion, and part of the discussion Cameron will show us, maybe.
We're getting there.
If the technology works.
To do a little bit of the history, at the city council meeting on March 2nd, the council requested that staff research potential height limitations, and the public hearing was continued to March 16th. On March 16th, the council further continued the public hearing to April 20th to allow for staff to complete the requested research. On April 19th, 2010, staff provided the council with an overview presentation on wireless regulations, and that was last night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. And as a part of that recommendation, we did hear a desire from the council to look at some aspects of our wireless ordinance in a little more specific and perhaps more significant way than the material that's before you as a part of what I've now come to call a housekeeping ordinance. So, we've recommended to the council to consider proceeding with the housekeeping ordinance as it's been presented to you, or make some smaller modifications, and that's one of the things we have queued up on your screen, and then give the staff direction to proceed with some larger areas to bring back and run through the planning commission process. You gave us that direction last night, and that's our marching orders at this point. So, I'm prepared to go through the two aspects of changes to the housekeeping ordinance that the council seemed to want to consider. One related to the allowance in this ordinance for locating the base station cabinet on the antenna support structure or the replacement utility pole itself. Please recall that right now, our ordinance requires the base station, if located in the right-of-way, to be underground. As we developed the housekeeping ordinance, we had taken in the comment from the wireless community to consider putting, allowing those base station units to be placed on the pole itself. You saw in some of the pictures, some older examples that have been placed around the city that show that. There was some concern we heard from council members about allowing that. So, I've highlighted for you the portion of the ordinance that would allow that to happen. You can see the phrase that's highlighted in yellow and double underlined would allow placement of those base stations on the antenna support structure, the utility pole itself. What I heard from the council last night is you might consider eliminating that. I want to give you essentially three options. One option is do what's shown there. That is what's supported by the wireless community, and you see in your packet the testimony from Mr. Abrahams. Second option is kind of the other end of the spectrum, which is take it out. A third option that you may want to consider is to move it down the hierarchy. As you can see, like our overall siting hierarchy, we have a hierarchy for base stations, and that's what's shown on the screen. Underground is at the top of the hierarchy. To move down the hierarchy, like our ordinance is built, you need to demonstrate that you can't do something higher up on the hierarchy. So, another option, instead of eliminating the option entirely, is to simply move it down. And that would allow the providers one additional tool in the toolbox, but it is the council's call as to whether you want to do that.
Nancy?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion by eliminating the words underscored in, or highlighted in yellow from subsection one, the words being "or attached to the antenna support structure and concealed or shielded from public."
Is there a second for that amendment?
I will second that.
I'll second it, too.
Okay, I think...
Four seconds, is what I heard.
I think Mr. Curley seconded it. Discussion on the amendment.
We're not going to allow another choice. We're just going to make them underground.
Well, the way the hierarchy is written right now, you do have four choices there. Underground is the top choice, and then you would work your way down. Choices two and three, just so we're clear, are within an existing building as long as it's not a single-family residence, or on top of an existing building as long as it's not a single-family residence. The number of times that will occur in the city is fairly minimal. So, those two options are rare options to be taken advantage of. Number four is fenced and landscaped or inside a building constructed for housing that. And there are the occasional, essentially, separate-built structure to house the base station. As those base stations are getting smaller, I think we'll see interest in that separate structure wane. But it isn't a loud thing to have a fenced and landscaped around it. But again, only if the undergrounding is not feasible. There are occasionally times when the undergrounding is not feasible, there's not physically room in the area to place it, and that's when we would allow that kind of thing.
Oh, no, we're eliminating the option to put it on the side.
You are, with that amendment.
The pole, on the pole.
Mark? The two reasons I support this amendment are, one, that the support cabinets being on the pole adds to the industrial look and I think is inconsistent with our residential neighborhoods. Two, we've learned that some of these cabinets include air conditioning or cooling fans that make them actually have noise, are not totally silent. Having them underground is the best noise attenuation, and having them underground is the best we can do for our citizens to keep the residential look of their residential neighborhoods intact. So, I support this particular change that Nancy's proposed.
Tom?
I'd like to add my voice to what Mark just said as well. He's covered the two points I was going to make, but those are the reasons I also support this amendment.
Just a point of clarification about the sound on page 17 in exhibit one, it does say that the maximum permissible sound levels to intrude into real property of another person from a WCF shall not exceed 45 decibels. I don't intuitively recall what 45 decibels sounds like. Is it normal voice?
I think it's around...
A constant hum?
Not a microphoned voice, but it is a hum because of the nature of the equipment that's there. We require the provider to demonstrate that the facility will not exceed that standard. Typically, you're going to see a normal residential structure probably as little as 20 feet, but often it's 30 or more feet away from the actual structure.
Going back to my former life with Boeing, the noise at 45 dBs will be higher than that of a 7378 going overhead on descent into C-Tech. On descent into the airport.
That's you, John?
I've got a squeaky mic.
WD-40, John.
But of course, coming in for a landing, they have a...
They have a cutback.
Cut back quite a bit.
I thought it was mentioned last night, 35 was...
No, 45.
It says 45 in here. Yeah.
Let's just bury this thing.
Yeah, just let's have all the conversation.
I'm sorry.
Nancy?
Oh, well, I was going to say, when they did the EIS for 228th back in the 80s and 90s, even though it didn't get built for another decade or two, they looked at noise level, what was acceptable, and it was 60-something was the federal guidelines. The state didn't have any back then. And 228th, by Discovery Elementary, is well above 60, just from the car traffic, so...
Well, we had this discussion back when we talked about HVAC on the side yards, and we said you couldn't have it on the side yard, you had it in the backyard, which, as pointed out yesterday, was one of the reasons some elder property owners were concerned about joining our city. But I think we should really be sensitive to noise levels, and this type of noise level is a constant one. I don't mind a dog barking intermittently in my neighborhood. But...
I haven't met my neighbor's dog.
Comes back to her, haunts her. But to have this...
Animal control is later on your agenda tonight.
So, I also will agree to this amendment. Is there any other comments on this? No? If we're ready for the question, and all those in favor of the amendment as defined, please say aye.
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 Opposed? By your vote of seven zero, that amendment is approved.
And just as a note, staff will make these corrections, and then when the mayor is ready to sign the ordinance, you can confirm that they've been done correctly.
Nancy?
I have one question about the third item on that paragraph, the "not in a single-family residential."
Yes.
That's... What about an accessory thing like a garage in a single-family home, attached, unattached garage next to a home?
That's an accessory used to the single-family residential, so we would not allow that.
Thank you.
So, if you go to page 15, Melanie, please, there's another highlighted section. The next section deals with, again, an aesthetic issue, and as we reported, we do have code in the... Yeah, right there. We do have code that you're looking at right now, this subsection B, that deals with the coloration for the conduit and other aspects of the antenna equipment that's mounted on the pole. And there's a concern about whether we would have, you know, brown pole and gray or silver conduit and different colors, and the more that the equipment and the pole were the same color, the better. That helps in the concealment, and we've seen that in the more recent construction of facilities here, including one outside on 228th. So, we've kind of buffed up this code to make it more explicit that that is required. We have been requiring it as a part of our permit approval based on the existing language, but based on the council's interest, we thought we'd go ahead and add this additional language. So, that's for your review and approval. I think it's fairly self-evident. You can see the requirement to match.
Okay, do we have a motion to make those changes?
Question.
Question?
Are we going to move on the motion before...
Yeah.
No. Well, we're going to get the motion on the table and then discuss it.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to make this amendment?
We do have a motion, or are you looking?
Waiting for one.
I'd like to move that we make the changes, including the underlying language as presented.
Thank you.
Second motion?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion. Nancy?
Well, John had a...
I was just going to say, oh, John James.
The other John.
Yeah.
Where in the city do we have blue? I mean, I see blue here as an option. I'm trying to think. Do we have any structures?
High blue? I don't know.
We have a blue water tank.
I think they're doing examples.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is to provide a range in case something like that were to come up. I don't have an inventory off the top of my head.
I'm just concerned that somebody puts up a blue pole and puts blue piping on it, and we call that good, and blue tarp is kind of the antithesis of homeowners association, so blue is a standout color. It's not a neutral, you know, earth tone color.
You could eliminate one of the colors on the list, but as the city manager said, we have, the water tower is kind of a sky blue, and sometimes they're a combination of blue and green to allow them to blend in with the surrounding environment.
The one that I have close to my home is the blue tower.
Mr. City Attorney has a comment.
I would bring to council's attention that this subsection doesn't specify or dictate a particular color. The introductory language is "use colors such as," meaning as an example. The substance of this provision is simply to tie in any structures to the existing facility using the same color, but it does not mandate use of any particular colors.
Or give a color selection.
So, the way the staff would apply this in practice, if they are swapping out a brown utility pole and putting up a replacement brown utility pole, everything on the pole has to be brown, which helps the blending in.
Nancy, and then John.
I like this, but I don't think it goes far enough. I think we have been hearing, we want it to blend in, we want it to be compatible with what's there, we want the pole to be, have integrity with its accouterments, or put it inside, but we also, I think, want it, if every other pole in the subdivision is pink, we don't want blue. I mean, so some kind of wishy-washy language that doesn't put a mandate on them, but some language that indicates it's our desire that it be consistent with...
How about this? Just a verbal friendly amendment. I'll read it out. "Using colors such as brown, gray, blue, or green that match the existing antenna support structure, comma, structures in the local area, and reduce visual impacts."
And I'd say practicable.
Do you want to, as practicable in there, too?
No.
Why?
No, it's legally... Well, you don't want to say...
Mark, you made the amendment.
I accept the friendly amendment because I think it starts to get at the idea that we're trying to match the structure that's being replaced by what is now going to be a antenna, and that we're trying to match the color of the structure or the pole that was being replaced with this antenna.
Correct.
And I think that the friendly amendment helps us get there, and it would be staff that would be looking... that would be looking at that subject as part of the administrative review.
That's correct. And we do a visual simulation for all of these. They have to show what this is going to look like through a Photoshop representation, and so we're able to verify the color that would be used.
Okay, John?
Maybe it's not part of the subsection, but just wondering who's gonna maintain it. Isn't that the question we brought up last night? And are they gonna have to start painting these things? And is also this thing grandfathered in, are they gonna have to start making these things?
Hard for me to deal with the grandfathered question to cause an existing permitted facility to now be painted another color. I suppose we can look at that a little more in a, in the second sort of more broad policy piece that you've asked us to look into. Happy to come back and report on that. I did not have time between last night and tonight to fully look into that. But, yeah, they probably will fade, as the pole itself will fade over time, so.
Right, but I mean, you know, the one thing is paint it, and the next thing you know, after a couple of years, it's chip, paint chipping off, and it starts turning into an eyesore, and then maybe the original carrier's not on there anymore, not responsible for the pole, and now we got our guys climbing up there painting the thing?
I doubt, I doubt we would, we would do that with city staff. Certainly, if there's any kind of hazard to the integrity of the equipment, both PSE and the provider would need to maintain that. So if it's corrosion, for example, or something else that is affecting, could affect the integrity, they'd wanna maintain that. I don't know that we can guard against all normal wear and tear, though. The other thing that we talked about was that as equipment changes, we will see those carriers start to swap out some of those things. So that could present an opportunity for another permit that we would issue for the city, and as that permit came in, if there was an issue, we could take care of it at that time.
Okay, Tom, and then Michelle, I think.
Just as general statement, I'd be in favor of some, shall we say, retroactive application of camouflage to these poles. On the overall subject to camouflage, one of the quickest ways to, the military uses to identify a enemy aircraft is by silhouette identification. And one of the things that struck me about both the Tri-Sax pole and the pole down by the seven-eleven on the lakeshore was they both stuck out like sore thumbs. And I'm wondering, have we at all explored the idea of using some of the, some camouflaging painting technique to break up the silhouette? In other words, the color variations, so that you don't see one continuous shape?
In other words, a darker, more earth tone near the bottom, and maybe a sky tone at the top.
Perhaps, yeah, but just different patterns on the pole, so.
And perhaps for a, and those two are good examples, especially the one down on the lake where there's not another collection of poles in the local area to sort of help it blend in. It's not one of, a number of poles. It's a little more of a singular feature. That may be a good opportunity for something like that. Again, I would put that on the list for further research if the council remembers.
Good, Michelle?
My comment had to do with maintenance, and I, we get, collect fees on an annual basis for these poles, don't we? I don't know what the-
There's a franchise fee. I don't know that it's annual, yeah.
The carriers are responsible for maintenance and operation of this thing, that they do give us a franchise fee for the privilege of using the city property in a city rights way.
And in fact, it's something like a thousand or fifteen-hundred dollars a month, isn't it?
It's about eight-hundred bucks, the last time I remember the fee. But we will be coming back to the council with a new fee schedule.
That we could tap into if we had a problem pole.
Mark? I thought that council member Curly brought up a good issue about maintenance, and I understand where, the direction we gave last night was to have more substantial amendments, you know, put into a later kind of category that would go through planning commission. I would point out that some other cities actually do have sections on removal of abandoned antennas and towers. That's the kind of thing we can look at. And if, at the point where they do get abandoned, we can have requirements that they be taken down. And other cities have also worked on height limits, and I think that that's something that particularly the tower by the seven-eleven pointed out, that in some neighborhoods, maybe just having the house height be what's allowed. Without going on at length, I'd just say that here, in the city of Bellevue code, which I'm not sure they think is, every word is, you know, on a tablet and not subject to change. I know they have things they're struggling with as well in the Development Services Department. But their, their code talks about that except where a conditional use permit is required, requests to exceed the height limit for the underlying land use district require an administrative conditional use permit. So they're really limiting the antennas to the height that's allowed in the neighborhood. So if it's a thirty-five-foot houses, they allow thirty-five-foot poles. They do say you can go higher, but that you have to construct, you have to show, the director may approve requests to exceed the height limit for underlying land use district. If the applicant demonstrates that, construction of a network consisting of a greater number of smaller, less obtrusive facilities is not technically feasible. So it's possible that in some areas where we find tall antennas to be really out of character with that residential neighborhood, we could have code, and another city has code, that says, look, show us that a network of smaller antennas couldn't do the job before we give you the taller antenna. So that's the kind of thing we can look at in the future with planning commission review.
That sounds like a real good addition to your work.
I just say that that's something Cameron brought up yesterday, which was, you know, none of us here are experts on this, and, you know, not there's any scoundrels out there in the cell tower business, but, you know, they could run circles around us and basically say, listen, we can't do it, X, Y, and Z, and we left sort of shaking our head either up and down or sideways, saying, I guess so, I don't know. I mean, Cameron's not gonna start investigating these things. He's got enough on his plate to have to decide whether or not these people are telling us the truth or not. It gets pretty complicated. So I like the idea of stopping them from putting something in as obtrusive as, what, over near that seven-eleven, but certainly you put in there, they're able to sort of squirrel their way around, possibly.
Yeah, no, whatever language might, but it's a whole subject that we could address and look at and further consider with, after planning commissions looked at it.
Tom, and then Nancy?
I think somewhere in here, there's a cost trade-off between the cost of a very high, very technically challenging pole versus the simpler ones that, where you hit sort of a sweet spot, where the cost of multiple poles might not be that different from the cost of having a few very large poles, I would suspect. I brought this issue up last night, and no one knew the answer, about the cost of a, say, a forty-foot pole versus a hundred-and-twenty-foot pole. So if it's a three-to-one trade, I think that's in favor of the neighborhood.
Right. Nancy?
You know, we had an example on Lake Smamish where the, they were relocating utility poles, and they put one right in the middle of somebody's picture window to, of like, with a view of Lake Smamish. When we send this to the planning commission, I'd like to see some language reviewed on minimizing visual impacts to neighbors.
Correct.
And locating it, if they can move it over five feet. I really think that would give them flexibility and make it a lot more user, neighborhood-friendly.
Okay, why don't we finish up with this amendment we have on the table? And Cameron, when you talked about this particular one, you said you wanted to buff it up, but you didn't mean to include the color buff in there, did you?
I did not include the color buff.
Is there any further discussion on this amendment? All those in favor of this amendment, including the friendly amendment to it, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, just the amendment. Opposed by your vote of seven-zero, this amendment is approved with the friendly amendment. Are there any others?
Those were the two the council asked for. That's all I've prepared. Certainly be happy to answer other questions.
Any further discussion on the proposed ordinance as amended? Are we ready for the question? Then, all those in favor of the ordinance, ordinance number two thousand ten dash two eighty-one, amending the wireless communications facility, SMC twenty-one A fifty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed by your vote of seven-zero, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
You, Cameron. And now we are, there's no unfinished business. Council reports we have an update on animal control. It's under council reports, but I'll refer to the city manager on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The while back, received a notice from King County telling us that the county will no longer be able to continue with the animal control program as they had done it in the past decade.
This is item number eleven.
And since then, cities and counties have been working on finding a solutions to be able to provide this much-needed services in a number of cities and in unincorporated King County. The issue for the county was simply, they were subsidizing this program in the, in the tunes of millions of dollars. And given the county's budget problems, county basically said, we simply cannot do this any longer. Puju-san, city managers group, elected officials, the mayors, suburban cities associations, everybody's been working on this thing. And from our city, I asked Mike Sauerwine to track this issue for us, so Mike has a comprehensive report to give you on this. Mike?
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council.
Not too comprehensive.
Brevity is the soul of wit.
Five minutes comprehensive.
As most of you probably know, since the nineteen-eighties, King County has been providing animal control, sheltering, and pet licensing services in both the incorporated and unincorporated areas of the county. In two thousand nine, the county council directed the county executive to essentially enter into contracts with all the incorporated cities, Smamish being one of them, by June thirtieth of this year. And since we knew the date was coming, as Ben said, there's been a number of cities and the county, we've been getting together for breakfast every Wednesday morning since January, and putting together what we're calling an agreement in principle for regional animal services. Now, the agreement in principle includes several things. Includes specific requirements for animal control. We'll be dividing the county up into four districts. You can see where Smamish is, if I can get the pointer going here. You can see where Smamish is and which district we're in. Each of those districts would have a full-time animal control officer who would work forty hours a week, eight hours a day. If there were calls after hours, they would go to supervisors. The agreement in principle also includes sheltering. The Kent shelter would remain open, have a limit of seven thousand animals a year, be open seven days a week. Pet licensing would also be continued to be taken care of by King County. They would continue to do any of the marketing and administration of the pet licensing program. The length of the agreement is somewhat short. We're looking at a two-and-a-half-year agreement starting July first, and with the possibility of extending that agreement for an additional two years. The reason for the short agreement is because the Animal Services Committee, that's what we're calling ourselves, is going to continue to meet, and we're gonna continue to look for ways that we can continue to cooperate and develop a nice county-wide system. Important note, the system that we're trying to develop will only work if enough cities work together and participate in it. Turning to some of the financial information, the total cost for animal services for the entire system countywide of the cost for animal control, about one-point-six million. Cost for animal sheltering, sheltering is always the important and expensive piece, about three million. To administer the pet licensing program, and then also the total cost for animal control services, about five-point-six million for the entire county. We do, of course, receive revenue from pet licensing. Pet licensing revenue in two thousand nine was about three-point-two million, so the important numbers at the bottom, two million, three hundred ninety-two-thousand four hundred and thirty-one, that's a pretty exact number for an approximate, is how much we need to come up with to be able to make the system work.
We are meaning it's consortium of cities in the county, it's not the Smamish only, right?
Actually, the city of Smamish will be coming up with the entire amount. We're taking it out of that allocation for remodeling Ben's office. Also throw in the editorial comment that these slides were brought to you by Sarah Nintiman, one of our local animal-loving city employees. Costs would be allocated based on two things. Fifty percent of the costs would be based on usage of the system. For example, how many times do you, animals dropped off at the Kent shelter? How many calls are there for service within the city? And fifty percent based on the city's population. So King County, in the rural areas, their allocation is four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Important note, King County really has gotten behind this program, and I wanna give them a lot of credit for coming up with eight hundred thousand dollars in transitional funding. This funding would go to cities that have either a high per capita cost for their animal services, or in the alternative, a low amount of revenue that they're receiving from pet licensing. So in the first year of the program, even though King County's actual allocated cost would only be four hundred and forty-four thousand, they're actually putting one-point-two million dollars on the table. That means the total amount to be allocated to cities that we would have to pay for, our portion of the thirty-some cities throughout the county, is about one-point-one million dollars. So how does this shake out for Smamish? Well, I have, I'm happy to say that the citizens of Smamish are not big users of animal, of the animal control program, or having to drop off their animals at the Kent shelter. On the alternative, folks in Smamish are very good about getting their pets licensed. As a result, we have a very high level of revenue from pet licensing. And I won't go through all the numbers. I mean, you can see the amount for animal control, sheltering, and licensing administration, and then our revenue for pet licensing. Important number at the bottom, Smamish's estimated annualized cost for two thousand ten, our portion of the total cost is only six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So if that program had been in place in two thousand ten, that is what we're estimating would have been our contribution to it. We do have, go ahead, Ben.
This is a significant lower number than what I was afraid of regionally, because the initial numbers that I was throwing at me was in the tunes of two hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand, so this is going in the, absolutely in the right direction.
Mike, one question on the revenue side of things. You showed a number a while back for the county, county as a whole. I forget what that was.
Four hundred and forty thousand.
Whatever it was.
Next slide.
Four forty-four.
Yeah. No, for the licensing itself, the licensing revenue. Okay, yeah, it's three-point-two million. Is that number tracked pretty well with other years, or has it dropped off because people are, because the economy's simply not registering their pets anymore?
It's my understanding that King County did not raise their pet licensing fee from sometime in the mid-eighties until two thousand eight. In two thousand nine, the amount of revenue went up significantly because of the fact that the cost for licenses went up. Now, tracking actual number of licenses sold, actual number of licenses sold has been fairly steady over the years.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Just wondered how firm that number was.
So under this new agreement, is it assumed that the license fee would be the same in all cities, or could the cities pick their own license fee to try to cover some of the negative costs?
It would be a county-wide program with the licensing fees established uniformly across the county. Having said that, there's a couple of cities that have made a real effort to increase the number of licenses and the percentage of licenses within their cities, and have been fairly successful at it. I mean, and it runs the full gamut. One, the city of Seattle has their own program. They're not affiliated with the county program. But Seattle, for example, is at one extreme of having a zero tolerance for unlicensed pets. I mean, if there's an unlicensed dog in a dog park, they will give you a hundred and fifty-dollar fine and give you an application for a pet license.
Hundred and fifty-dollar fine?
I don't think they hand it out that often.
They do if they pick up the dog.
Yeah, what a number of cities have done is they've worked, is they've worked with their veterinary clinics, they've worked with school kids, they've made pet licenses available, it's applications with, you know, for example, when we have an annexation, we send out, you know, in our application, our welcome to Smamish packet. By the way, if you have a cat, here's your, here's your cat license application, and been fairly successful at it, and those kind of non-invasive ways.
One other question. We have zones, and we're in the two-hundred zone, and our zone seems to come out ahead. All the cities in our zone total end up plus ten thousand dollars. The other zones, in fact, two forty has minus a million dollars. If some of the cities in those, like Kent, which has minus six hundred and forty-two- which has minus 642,000, if they drop out, does that affect us up in the 200 zone?
In, in the long run, yes, it does. And what, what you're leading into is, you know, a couple of the areas of concern that we have. While as it's really good news that Smamish is only looking at spending six, $7,000, there are partners, Kent, for example, that's more in the $600,000 range. And there are a number of cities, of the larger cities that we need to make sure we encourage them to participate in the program, because they're the ones that are, are going to be paying the lion's share as we go forward. Part of the reason the county is putting the transitionary funding on the table is to encourage those cities to participate. I don't think I put it in a slide, but in the memo, I think I listed out for you Auburn, Bellevue, and Kent as three larger cities, that the transitionary funding will actually be about a 50% reduction in some cases for their actual costs.
Okay. Nancy?
Here.
Nancy?
Is there some mechanism whereby a low-income resident can get the fees waived?
For pet licensing?
Mm-hmm.
Not as it's currently structured unless you're a senior citizen. There is a senior citizen right.
Well, most of us would qualify.
Okay, other questions for staff? Now...
As low-income or senior citizen?
Now, what we have is a report, and at the Suburban Cities Association, the county was there, and they were hoping to get some commitments from the cities. It's sort of a chicken-and-egg situation here. If they don't know who's going to commit to it, they can't give us assurances that this is what our cost would be. And...
I, I think we should commit to the county if the numbers hold as they're presented to us.
Yeah. Are we, are we comfortable? John?
The transitional money, the 800,000, is that just for one year?
It's, it phases down over about a three-and-a-half-year period. So even though it's, it's a two-and-a-half-year initial contract with potential for a two-year extension, so the first three-and-a-half years of that on a, on a reducing rate, there would be transitionary funding available. But in 2014, at least as, at least as it's, as it's currently constructed, the transitionary funding would end. And so, you know, as I said, that, that is one of the areas of concern.
So whatever it is today, it's going to be closer to Ben's number a year or two from now?
Not for the city of Smamish.
We're not benefiting from the transitional funding. Our revenues pay for the cost of the services. Transitional funding is benefiting other cities that have a significant shortfall. Like Mike was saying, is that the Kent is, for example, 600,000 dollars. I suspect that they will stay in the program because alternative is much costlier for them. So I know everybody's going through a number crunching. It's just like anytime you try to do something regional, everybody looks at their own personal interest. But there's a couple cities attentive to do this thing, and I think one of them is the city of Buryon. There's, they're spending close to 140,000 dollars in revenues. They have about the 20, 35,000 dollars. That's what I heard latest numbers from them. Regional plan is the best plan that we have on this issue. It is a uniform application of the regulations. It's a consistent treatment of the program. I think this makes sense right now, and we should take the lead, encourage the other cities to continue. And if the Council authorize me to do so, I will do that.
Do we have a consensus, or do we want a motion to authorize the city manager to, to write a letter saying that we're supportive of it with certain discretion with regard to changing in the number? We have a consensus on that?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Michael, thank you also. Doing tireless job on this one. This, this probably took more time on Michael's side than the, any other jail time or the regional committee times, and appreciate that, your efforts on this.
All those once-a-week lunches, breakfasts, or whatever they are.
King County's a cheap date. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, next is other council reports.
We have a long executive session, so I want to give you a heads-up.
Oh, dear.
Okay.
Were we going to do the planning commission on the city manager's report?
I, I'm going to do that in the next meeting.
Just a minute, we're on the council reports now. We'll see if the city manager has a report when we get to him. Nothing, Mark?
No report.
John?
No report.
John?
No report.
Nancy?
None.
Michelle?
Don, are you going to talk about the Kokoni thing tomorrow?
You can talk about it.
Oh, I didn't know if it was on your list, because I, I know that it's, um...
It's not open to the public.
Oh.
Tomorrow, we're having a release of Kokoni fry into Ebroite Creek on, on private property, Wally Pereira's land, and there's limited space available for cars and people. So it was by invitation only. You were invited, though.
Thank you.
Is that your report, Michelle?
My report.
Tom?
Just real briefly, I'm tempted to say no report, but I have to do say one thing. As you all know, over the last couple of weeks, my wife has gone through a major surgery situation, and I'm pleased to say she's doing very, very well. But the last couple of weeks have given me a real appreciation for people who are caregivers. I've had to fulfill that role for the first time in my life, and believe me, it's not easy. It's given me a, a different perspective on those that do have disabled people at home and have to deal with them on a daily basis. So to those of you out there who are in that situation, you do have my admiration. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And it's good to hear that Ruth is coming along all right, even though she's giving you a hard time, huh?
Probably give me a hard time when I get home. She's probably watching us.
I did want to report that we, we had a meeting from, from six till seven this evening with our local legislators and representatives, our legislators, from two districts. And in addition, Kathy Lambert from the county council. And it was basically a debriefing of the legislative session, which was quite a depressing debriefing, because the, the forecast for the next legislative session is depressing also. However, we, we did have some good discussions with them, and they, they agreed that we should continue to have those discussions in anticipation of the next legislative session, dealing with issues that are relevant to cities. And in particular, the one I brought up, which I also brought up this morning in a conference call with other cities, and that is the real estate excise tax flexibility package, which didn't pass the legislature. And it didn't pass, basically, we were asking the legislature to allow us to use real estate excise tax funds, which right now are for capital projects only, to allow us to use them for maintenance and operation of existing capital facilities, rather than having to build more and not having the funds in our general fund to handle the ongoing operations. And there was strong lobby effort against it from certain parties, and the legislature listened to the lobbyists and not to our lobbyists. But we're going to come back again next year, and, and hopefully we'll have better results next year. And there are some other possible city issues, and we have a legislative committee at AWC, and, and I've, again, agreed to be on that legislative committee.
Awesome.
So we'll see what we can do. So if you have any ideas of things we ought to change at the legislature, funnel them through me, and I'll get them up to AWC. Now, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I want to just give a very quick report, then I want to expand on that one at the next council meeting. I want to first thank you and Deputy Mayor, making times to meeting with the, the various commissions and, and citizens. The, based on the council retreat, council requested that we continually have that dialogue with our commissions. We already done that with the Park Commission, and just recently, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, myself, and Community Development Director met with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission to prioritize the work items of the Planning Commission for the 2010. I will expand on the work items priorities, but the most importantly, I want to report to the Council that the Mayor and Deputy Mayor are following the direction of the overall Council desire. And I also want to personally thank you, the amount of the time that you guys are putting into this task. Appreciate that. We do have executive session. It's going to take us some time. That's why I'm cutting my report short. I would like to expand on this meeting that we had with the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair at the next regular council meeting. I'll, I'll give you a more detailed report on the work items.
Okay, Nancy?
Just one point of clarification. We did not, obviously, decide on the priority items that we're bringing. We discussed them, and we're bringing them back to Council for action and approval.
We're going to have just like a session next year, you mean?
No, I'm sorry, for the Planning Commission workload.
Work plan.
Oh. Obviously, that's going to be a subject of discussion at the next city manager's report. Ben was going to tell you what the topics were and, and see if you concurred with some preliminary discussion we had on, on what would be the priorities.
Okay, next is the executive session. It's potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4231101i. And how long do you anticipate it'll take?
Mr. Mayor, it'll be about 25 minutes, and no action will be required.
Thirty-five minutes?
Twenty.
Twenty-five minutes?
Twenty-five minutes.
Okay, and no action will be required. Okay, so we'll turn to executive session.